I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What are you doing here Chairman?
This is a, this is called the hearing agenda. This is for the discussion of the County Human Services Plan for fiscal year 2012-2013.
This is Jim Martin from Lackawanna, Susquehanna, BI.
Behavioral Health, Intellectual Disabilities and Early Development.
Very good, thank you. Okay, and he got this all together for us and he's going to speak. This has to do with the block grant, the money for human services in Susquehanna County, and how they're going to be used.
Commissioners, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate everyone coming out today. And I'm just here kind of speaking on behalf of that back row back there, but there were a number of people that were involved in the preparation of this plan, and certainly I want to mention Sue Adamick, Michelle Graciello, Steve Arnold, Jeremy Yellen, and Jeff Zerichak. And Sylvia Beamer helped us on the county side with the Human Service Development Fund and Housing Assistance Programs. What we're here for today is to respond to the Commonwealth's effort to allocate seven funding streams that deal with persons with mental illness, nosy recoveries, persons with intellectual disabilities, children and youth, homeless populations, and drug and alcohol populations. The Commonwealth, through the General Assembly, passed Act 80 that put seven funding streams together, and they allocated them, or will be allocated, into counties in one single stream. The Commonwealth asked that counties put together a single county plan to address those funding streams across the Commonwealth. Before I get into that briefly, and this handout will describe some, I just want to say just a couple of things. I want to thank the Commissioners for working closely with all of us. I think all of us in the human service area really appreciate that. The, I want to mention certainly Commissioner Warren, who's on our advisory board, Commissioner Allen, who attended, I know, one of the training sessions and the orientation around the block grant. It's nice to have county Commissioners who are intimately involved in that process and can work with the agencies, so we do appreciate that. This handout we put together really is kind of an introductory piece that's located within this plan that the Commissioners have today, and it really just summarizes a couple of items for you. If you look at page one, those services that are listed there with bullet points, they're the various services that are included within this plan. And I want to just mention a couple of quick things here. The behavioral health care services, drug and alcohol services, and ID services are in this plan as part of a jointer program. The Commonwealth asked us to include the appropriations for the jointer, so it includes Lackawanna County funds along with Susquehanna County funds. So that's an important distinction to make. Children and youth, homeless assistance, HSDF funds are pure funds that come directly to county, Susquehanna County, and those funds are reflected in here as a single county appropriation for Susquehanna County, so I do want to mention that item to you. The county Commissioners had an option to participate in the block grant as one of the counties, and I think wisely they chose to wait and see what that block grant initiative looks like and get some reporting on that to see how the reports came out on that. So they opted not to participate, but they still have the requirement to do a single county plan. There were 20 counties that were selected statewide, and none of them that affect us right here. Page two talks a little bit about the planning process, and I mentioned our back row here and the people involved in that process, and you'll see the names and the agencies reflected there. They were all instrumental in putting this together, and we just happened to be the conduit to put the plan together. When you turn to page three, you'll see the responsible agencies. They're the agencies I mentioned before, and the specific funding streams that each one of those agencies are responsible for that are included in the plan. Not to get too technical, but with behavioral health and intellectual disabilities, all of the base appropriations for those programs are in the plan. For children and youth, there's a portion of their funding that's in this. All of HSDF, all of the homeless assistance program monies are in it, and in drug and alcohol, there's only a portion of their funds that get into the plan. When you move on to page four, and down the bottom of page three to four, I just wanted to give you a very quick idea of the demographics and funding. When you look at this pie graph that's reflected there, and again, I want to make this point because when people see those numbers, you'll see that the plan accounts for $12 million, roughly $12 million. Just remember, though, that the behavioral health program, intellectual disabilities and drug and alcohol represent Lackawanna and Susquehanna. The Commonwealth was very clear that they wanted the numbers in the plan to reflect the appropriations for the jointer programs. So you see, this plan talks about $12 million serving about 13,000 people. You're going to see here also that the behavioral health care program and intellectual disabilities program represents about $11 million, which is about 91 percent of the dollars within the plan. When you walk down below that, we have drug and alcohol that represents $810,000. Again, the jointer program Lackawanna and Susquehanna, that represents 7 percent of the block grant funds. Then we walk into children and youth, $72,000, which is evidence-based in housing services, and that represents about 1 percent, and the block grant homeless assistance is the other 1 percent. So that kind of gives you a very quick idea of the composition of the plan in respect to dollars, the people served, and who participate in this process. When you turn to the last page, it just, again, highlights for you services that are involved, the estimated number of individuals that are served, and the dollar expenditure that that amounts to. That's a very quick overview of the plan. The plan is here for the Commissioners, and I know they're going to consider the approval of the plan at their meeting at nine o'clock today. You're more than welcome to take a look at it. What the county Commissioners decided to do on this was to look at the appropriations, look at whatever reductions came from the Commonwealth, and try to minimize those reductions to the categoricals, and whatever reductions came in, that's the reductions that are going across the programs. I know we've been here, and I know we've been up on contracts in the past, we've talked a little bit about the reductions that we saw this year in the Governor's budget and how that impacts services. But that's a very quick overview. I could certainly address any of the behavioral health ID issues. I know Jeff Zerichak is drug and alcohol, Sue Adamick, Michelle, and you know, the children and youth issues, so.
Can we take any questions?
Yeah, public comment is open now.
I'd like to ask, when you have these figures here, are these figures for this year, 2012-2013, how does it compare with the other, the previous years, as far as how many people are being serviced? Here it says 11,828, or total of 13,000, almost 14,000 people are being serviced, right? How does it compare with the year before that and the past two or three years? Or is it the same amount of people being serviced, pretty much?
Well, let me talk about behavioral health and ID services. Generally, the numbers that you see related to behavioral health and intellectual disability services are generally consistent. The dollar value, our dollar value, we reduce by about 10 percent in the state appropriations. So in total, the behavioral health and ID appropriations were about 1.2 million dollars less than what we were previously.
And is that because the budget, the state doesn't have enough money and they're reducing the funding?
Well, I don't know if I could answer that clear. I mean, the Commonwealth made a decision on how they were allocating funds, and they, in the case of our system, we lost about 1.2 million dollars.
So you're saying it's the same amount of people, pretty much, for this year as previous years, that are being serviced in all these categories? You know, it's about 14,000 people, but the funding is less?
Well, what I'm telling you is behavioral health and ID services, and maybe Jeff and Sue can talk about seeing why.
But what about the homeless, the number for homeless? You have 284 for this year, what about the previous years?
Right, that's generally the same, I think.
Generally the same, there hasn't been much of a change?
And I can tell you how we dealt with the reductions in behavioral health and ID services. Many of the agencies we deal with look at changing staffing patterns, they look at reducing benefits, reducing salaries. That's how they dealt with a lot of those reductions.
So you had to reduce salaries of people who are working in these categories?
Right.
So that sounds like budget cuts, but you're not willing to use that word?
Well, I can tell you clearly that the county programs received budget cuts. What the decision process was at the Commonwealth level, I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you looking for an increase in funding from the county?
No, our local match requirements, I know in behavioral ID were consistent with the prior year.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
We are adjourned.
Eight fifty-six.
If there is a signature sheet.
Did you drop your whole meeting?
Well, no, just as part of the meeting.
Oh, this came around?
Yeah, this is the.
Is that here?
Human Services and Human.
There'll be a motion during the regular meeting to adopt the plan that was presented.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Where are you going to start?
Yeah.
That, that's your, something there. It's probably something over here. Pull it over.
Well, you have a little bit too short. They have those.
Thank you, sir. Love your picture over there with the, each year. Love it. I absolutely love it. I got to read to, I got, no, I got to read to on story hour last Saturday, Tuesday morning. Great color, yeah. Good news.
What's the news?
I need to call in about working with you guys sometime in the future.
All right.
Oh, how are you?
Call me up.
Thank you.
Uh, no, but I'm going to get it from you right now.
Nine, six, seven, two, four, three, seven.
There you go.
One, two.
Kind of like bring your own chair? Edit one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. There's a chair on the corner, and there's one right here. And here's Bobby Joe. There's a chair on the back corner, okay? There's one up here, too.
Hi, it's nine a.m. We'll call the Commissioners' meeting to order. All Commissioners are present. I will state at the beginning of this meeting that our meeting rules, public comment will be reserved to three minutes per person, and only members of the political subdivision of Susquehanna County. At this time, we'll move to item number three.
Motion to approve the minutes from October 10.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second, or motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve the minutes. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay, item four.
I make a motion to approve item number four as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the cash dispersment and one-time fund transfers as sub-stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve the seminar requests and repayments for seminar reports. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you in favor or opposed?
Yeah, no, I am in favor. I approve number six.
I am six.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation as listed on your agenda regarding adoption awareness month in Susquehanna County.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to adopt proclamation proclaiming November as adoption awareness month. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item eight.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eight as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to adopt Resolution 2012-23 to abolish the elected office of jury commissioners in Susquehanna County. Questions or comments? Yes.
I don't know anything about the jury commissioner, but it does say it's an elected office. Is the office going to still be in effect? In other words, are you going from an elected official to an appointed official?
Yes.
And who appoints the official?
It'll be an employee. It'll be handled probably underneath the judge. The judge will probably be the one.
So the judge appoints the jury commissioner from now on?
Well, it won't be a jury commissioner, it'll be an employee that'll be handling the jury selection.
And what's the salary for that?
It hasn't been established yet. This goes until 2013.
What does they do?
Hmm?
What does they do?
Well, they select the position. What it does is they select the individuals to serve on the juries in the county.
Does this add another person to the county expenditures?
No, it's actually a reduction.
Okay.
Because you have two jury commissioners, you're going to probably go to a one-person position.
All right, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item number nine for resolution authorizing the filing for proposal for Pennsylvania housing affordability and rehabilitation enhancement funds. What that is, is there's grant money out there in the tune of like $411,000 that we're going after to provide assistance to improve low-income rentals, to improve them so that they can be affordable to low-income people.
I have a question, yeah. When you say low-income people, they're residents of our county, they're not like people that are coming in here to work?
Residents of our county.
Not workers, like gas workers?
No.
Okay.
Another question. Are there any strings attached to this for the future, or is it a one-time block of block grant?
At this point, it's a one-time grant. It's going to be funding that comes from the impact fees every year to the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, so technically we could apply every year. This will be our.
Is that block of money that goes to Harrisburg for housing, and this is our way to get some with the trickle-down into Susquehanna County?
Then I have a follow-up question. If that money should disappear from the impact fee, are we going to be responsible for continuing this program?
No.
No?
No, it's a rehabilitation program, just like the county's housing rehabilitation. You do as many units as you can for the money. Once that funding is gone, you're done.
Bobby Joe, is there criteria as to how long do they need to be renting to low-income?
Yes, the program is going to require landlords to commit to 10 years to rent to low-income individuals as a result of all the shortage of housing due to the Marcella Shale. We want to be sure that these units stay affordable to low-income people.
What is considered low income? Do you have a link on income limit?
It's a Section 8 guideline that's established by the Housing and Urban Development. I don't know the numbers offhand, but that's what this program requires you to go by for, it's 50 percent of the area median income.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll.
You're going to do 10?
This one, does 10 have anything to do with community?
That cooperation agreement. Bobby Joe would be able to answer any questions on it. It was also together.
The cooperation agreement is for this grant, the fair.
For this one?
The one that we just passed.
I think 10 is okay. 11 is when we have, if we have questions, I'm correct. So I'll make a motion to approve item number 10 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item 10, cooperation agreement between Susquehanna Housing and Development Authority Administration and Pennsylvania Housing Authority, rehabilitation enhancement program. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is on the table.
I'll make a motion to table item number 11 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Item 11 is tabled.
Motion to approve item number 12.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to adopt the County Human Services Plan for fiscal year 2012-2013. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item number 13 as listed on your agenda.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Why a resignation when she's already employed? Does that terminate her longevity with us, though that she has to start new?
No, this is just protocol, what's always been. She is resigning, she's resigning as of the same day she's being hired at a new position, if you look at the next one.
I, I looked at the next one. I'm just wondering if resignation is the right term? It is?
It's how it's, I, you know, I hate that term, but it's how it's always been done.
Resignation to me means I quit, I'm no longer employed.
She's resigning.
By you, and then you rehire me, so the time I've accumulated.
Yeah, she's resigning from her voter registration position.
I understand what's going on.
Okay.
I just didn't think it was a resignation.
I think it should be a transfer.
Well, that's what I ain't thinking is transfer. That's why I'm, I don't remember having, of course, I don't remember when it's last happened, but, yeah, I got a problem with the, I didn't think she was resigning, I saw she was transferred from one to the other because she's already employed by us. I am troubled by the word resignation.
Okay, that's what she gave us, if you want me to change it.
Well, that's probably because she was told to do that.
Okay, so I'd like to amend my.
Just combine 13 and 14 together.
I just don't want five years down the road or 10 years down the road.
I'd like to amend my motion to, well, I can't say to accept with regret a resignation from voter registration and the transfer to hire Amanda of Hot Bottom to the Deputy Chief Clerk.
I am troubled by the fact that if you resign, then years from now.
But it's on the same date, it's not the same.
She decides to retire, and they look at her pension and say, well, look, in 2012 you resigned, so you started to new, so your accumulation for time with the county starts anew, and there is a separation of that time. Now, I don't know whether that would happen, but in my life, when I see the word resignation, we're starting all over new again. And I just, I know that is not what we intend, but I believe it could be construed.
So we need to.
To raise that issue, and I just don't want that to happen. I thought you would just transfer from one to another.
Okay.
Am I right or am I wrong?
I'll make a motion to transfer Amanda Wilston from voter registration to the Deputy Chief Clerk position effective October 25th. Per the recommendation of Sylvia Beamer, a rate of 32.5 and minimum 40 hours and six months probation.
We haven't passed 13 yet.
No, we're combining 13 and 14 together.
And to transfer.
I'm okay with that.
Effective.
I'll second.
Okay, so we're done.
Okay, any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 15.
Motion to approve item number 15.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve Tricia's Donal Montrose to full-time open position of nine-in-one systems manager and data base analyst, 40 hours per week. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 16.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 16 as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to appoint Brian Hickley to the Economic Development Board for a term not ending, starting immediately ending December 31st, 2012. This fills another open position that was there.
Is he replacing somebody?
Yeah, it's an open position.
So who is he replacing?
Susan Dean.
Susan Dean, and what's his position, Mr.?
He owns Taylor Rental and BX3, or is that what it is? South Montrose. I don't know if they're the right.
And he used to be on it years ago?
He was at Chamber of Commerce.
I think he was, I think he was on it.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
One more, one.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, this isn't on your agenda, make a motion to authorize the Commissioners to sign the MOU between Penn State Cooperative Extension and Susquehanna County Commissioners, whereby Susquehanna County will fund a 4-H educator position for three years at the following amounts: 2013, $41,383; 2014, $43,109; 2015, $44,998. In addition to the 4-H educator position, Susquehanna County agrees to pay for the year 2013, $38,313 to support an administrative support position. The total amount Susquehanna County agrees to pay Penn State for the year of 2013, including the 4-H educator position and an administrative support position, is $104,883.
Do we have, this all just happened?
Right, 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 we've been working on it, she's been working on it for six months. The push is to get them to get the 4-H educator hired, and that's the big push right now. That's why it's, we're pushing this along so hard.
Do we have an MOU?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there one in place now? I thought there was.
It's here to sign, this one?
No, no.
This is effective January 1st, 2013.
January 1st. The one we currently have ends January 1st.
Okay. Did they submit a new written MOU?
Yes.
When did we get that?
Last night.
Last night.
Oh, that's why I haven't seen it.
Right.
I'd like to read it. I mean, I'm not opposed to the principle and principle.
This is, this is the Reader's Digest version of what it says.
But I don't disagree with.
It's, where is it? Is it here?
It should be there on the table.
Okay, so how do we get this done? I do not disagree with the principle, but I would like to read the MOU.
Here, based on.
I'm not going to sit here and mark it up and.
Can we do it agreed, based on approval by my reading name?
No, I'll second it. You made a motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item seventeen.
Motion to approve item number seventeen as listed on your agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco
I'll second it.
Saying by Commissioner Warren to appoint Bill Kelly to the Economic Development Board for a term not ending starting immediately ending December thirty first, twenty thirteen. This fills another open position that was there.
Is he replacing somebody?
Yeah, it's an open position.
So who is he replacing?
Susan Dean.
Susan Dean, and what's his position, Mr.?
He owns Taylor Rental and BX Threeer, is that what it is? South Montrose. I don't know if they're the right.
And he used to be on it, years ago?
He was at Chamber of Commerce.
Any other questions? All in favor? One more, one.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, this isn't on your agenda, make a motion to authorize the commissioners to sign the MOU between Penn State Cooperative Extension and Susquehanna County Commissioners whereby Susquehanna County will fund a four-H educator position for three years at the following amounts. Twenty thirteen, forty-one thousand, three eighty-three, twenty fourteen, forty-three thousand, one oh-nine, twenty fifteen, forty-four, nine ninety-eight. In addition to the four-H educator position, Susquehanna County agrees to pay for the year twenty thirteen, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars to support an administrative support position. The total amount Susquehanna County agrees to pay Penn State for the year of twenty thirteen, including the four-H educator position and an administrative support position, is one hundred, four thousand, eight hundred, eighty-three dollars.
Do we have, uh... This all just happened?
Right, 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 we've been working on it, she's been working on it for six months. The push is to get them to get the four-H educator hired, and that's the big push right now. That's why it's, we're pushing this along so hard.
Do we have an MOU?
Yes.
Is there one in place now? I thought there was.
It's here to sign, this one?
No, no.
This is effective January first, twenty thirteen.
The one we currently have ends January first.
Did they submit a new written MOU?
Yes.
When did we get that?
Last night.
Last night.
Oh, that's why I haven't seen it. I'd like to read it. I mean, I'm not opposed to the principle and principle.
This is the Reader's Digest version of what it says.
I don't disagree with...
It's, where is it? Is it here?
It should be there on the table.
Okay, so how do we get this done? I do not disagree with the principle, but I would like to read the MOU. I'm not gonna sit here and mark it up.
Can we do it agreed based on approval by my reading name?
No, I'll second it. You made a motion, I'll second it. Uh, and then we can...
I didn't know we were gonna have this. Well, we did, you got it last night at seven o'clock.
We've been, we've been six months pushing trying.
But you guys have been in on this, and I'm not questioning you folks, but before I go, I just, I would like to read it. So if you wanna go without me, I'm gonna read it anyway, and I am not opposed to the principle of what we've been trying to accomplish here. So I just don't want you to...
Yeah, we're motion, second.
You know, what I'm trying to get accomplished here, I'm gonna read it.
All right, motion is second, any questions?
As strange as this may sound coming from me, I wholly agree with Commissioner Jean Greco. And something like this should have been read and discussed in public with all of you having the knowledge of what this is, this agreement is.
Can I respond to that? These guys have been imminently involved, they've taken, and I'm not questioning what they've accomplished? But I, you know, we all have our little circles, I have been in that circle, and I just, I don't think I need to read it.
I think it sets a bad precedent for the future. I think all three of you should have read or, or discussed it in public and then come back next week. You say it doesn't go into, into effect until January.
Well, we need to get a four-H educator, um, the process going.
I know it's kind of sensitive and this thing, but you know, so stay one of these, spend a lot of time.
And Penn State has been holding this up, so...
Go ahead and do it.
What about Edward Goff and Kim Grace? Are they involved in this? That's up to Penn State. In other words, you don't know why you didn't. Well, I know that Penn State, uh, has said that they're gonna take and create one clerical position and the other one they're doing away with. But that's Penn State's decision. Well, I guess I better check with a couple of three trustees, I don't know. Thank you. Yes.
Are they doing away with the position because the county's no longer paying half of the salary?
That's Penn State's decision. Penn State is, uh, regionalizing a lot of the services that they do. So all the bookkeeping that used to be done here, they're regionalizing that for all the counties and doing away with it at all the local counties.
It's like a four-county consortium now.
No, I understand that, but I, I just know like last year, not last year, I haven't been here for a while because I had heart surgery, but last time I was here, the commissioners had voted not to pay half of the, half of the, um, salary for, uh, those two positions.
I don't remember that.
They were county employees and we paid full for those positions. We always have.
Oh, I thought Penn State paid half.
No, salary and benefits.
Regionally. What it is, is there's four counties, four counties, I think, four counties that Penn State, their regional director has four counties. So what he's doing, or what they're doing, because Penn State has, you know, the same budget crisis that everybody else has in the state and, and the US, uh, what they're doing is reducing their costs by regionalizing some of the, uh, overhead costs that they have by pulling things together and having one person do it instead of having, uh, one person in each location do it where you'd have four people do it. So, uh, they're trying to reduce their cost and, and put things together. They're also looking at a lot of the programs they run, they run with an educator, but the educator may not just serve Susquehanna County, they may serve all four counties. So all four counties share in the cost of what that person is. And that's through the regional, or the district-wide budget that they created. And this is a budget that they came up with. And a little bit like regional government. No, I don't know, how you wanna call it, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a more efficient way to run things. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Who I, you understand. Okay, this time we'll go into public comment, mind that it's three minutes per person. People of the political subdivision of Susquehanna County. Kathy?
Yes.
The Deputy Chief Clerk, was that salary already set? Was that the starting salary?
There was a range.
There's a range for that one.
Okay, because I would have preferred to have seen it on salary board.
It's within the salary.
That's why it's not, it's already mentioned.
In the legal notices of the transcript this week, uh, it says that there's going to be a meeting next Monday in the evening for the, for the purpose of setting salaries for elected officials. Could you explain what that is? What that's about? I mean, that's why elected officials came in and they had to set salary.
Well, they do when they first come in, but we set them, how many years are we going now? Four years?
Well, you go four years.
And we're starting which year?
Well, you start, you do it the year before they run.
Right.
So this'll be the prother, the clerk of courts, the sheriff, tax collectors.
So it starts the year twenty fourteen and goes out four years.
It's, it's not everybody, it's just a handful.
It's just, yeah, yeah.
That's when their terms are, that's when their terms are.
It's staggered. Does, can the public assume that these salaries are going up? Or is that a subject of, of budget negotiation?
Well, based on the commissioners taking a freeze, I would hope they'd all take a freeze.
So it is a negotiation?
I don't know. I guess, I gotta see the process, I am not a hundred percent sure of the process at this point.
Let me make it easy, there is no negotiations.
There you go.
It's my opinion, that's what I'm saying, there is no negotiation.
So then who sets the salary?
We do.
They do.
We do.
So the three of you, four of you sit down?
No, they, no.
So it's not called, there is a special...
Commissioners do it.
So someone making forty thousand dollars a year now, just take a number, you sit down and say, "Well, we'll either go on up or down or leave it at the same."
Yes.
I would like to make...
An elected official.
Well, then here's my comment, in view of the fact that people in the last four years have lost one-third of the value of their home, over four thousand dollars in the value of their net worth per year, that we're in the economic tank with no light to be seen for the, for the very, I won't even say near future, for who knows when. An elected official, even if they do a good job, I don't think this is the time to give raises. That's my personal opinion.
You were here before, when we set it, and this is confusing, and you should be here at that meeting.
Unfortunately, I can't make it that day.
This, this thing is confusing. We set our salaries, what, two years ago? Well, we had the other meeting because it staggered for when we were gonna...
Twenty ten.
That was last year, wasn't it?
Twenty ten.
Twenty ten.
October twenty ten.
We voted then that for the last two years, 'cause it staggered, we had to keep pace with the other elected officials at the time, that for the last two years of who we set it, no one got a raise, zero raise, and there was an increase in what everybody had to contribute
For their health insurance.
For their health insurance.
So basically, we took a cut.
Yes, there was a cut.
That's not completely true. Not everybody took a zero for the last two years. Only the commissioners took a zero for the last two years.
Oh, then I thought it was for...
I think the other one's got a two percent.
Yes, no. It was just for the commissioners, we took a zero to, to...
But we still, even, even with the raise, we still took the cut.
Right.
Absolutely, yes you did.
Yes.
Yes you did.
But we did, you did give the rest of us a raise.
Any other public comment? Yes.
On, um, October second, I filed a complaint with the, uh, with the Susquehanna County, um, subdivision. Has there been any, um, resolution to my complaint at all, Mr. Hall?
Uh, did Mr. Gardner get back with you?
Well, um, that's on another issue, Mr. Gardner, but coming out, and, um, I was supposed to meet with Mr. Gardner and the DEP. That was what our plan was, and that's not what happened. Mr. Gardner went out with DEP, and I got a, um, email stating that there was no, um, violations as far as all the timber that was hauled to that site, which I have a hard time understanding why anybody would allow that amount of timber to be hauled to a residential area. There's no business there. I, I don't, I'm getting confused where this business is that we are one grandfather-in-class in that went out and was shut down. I mean, I don't still understand how somebody, any landowner, has the ability to accept hundreds and hundreds of thousands of timber close to homes and between two creeks. I, I'm puzzled by this, I mean, I am...
Well, my understanding, you know, well, first of all, my understanding is the reason that, uh, you were not with, um, on the site is because the landowner of the site, uh, refused to let you on the site.
That's fine, that's acceptable.
And, well, let me finish, let me finish. Uh, secondly, DEP went out on the site and they reviewed the site and they find no violations whatsoever. So as far as soil conservation and DEP, there are no issues there. As far as the subdivision, I'm still working on that with the planning commissioner, and I will get back there.
'Cause my concern is, is then I spoke to Mr. Gardner, and I told him, I said, "I want a DEP to come over to my property to look at what happened to the creek there that had jumped out of the creek bed, and also where there was digging on the adjacent property that there was more dirt being dug to put in a bankment so that when it does overrain in, in Rock Creek, that it doesn't flow into that adjacent property."
The only thing I can tell you is DEP went out and reviewed the site and they find no violations.
But they didn't come to my home, which I specifically asked, with Mr. Gardner.
Have you called DEP and asked them if they'd come to your house?
Mr. Hall, I've been on this for three years now, and I mean...
I mean, that was a real, it's either yes or no, have you called DEP?
No, no, I, I thought it was something that, you know, Mr. Gardner and I could work on this together, knowing that I had been on this for three years now with this, with the, the problem that's going out in Gibson Township.
But the problems have changed over the three years.
Well, it, it, the, the problems have changed, but we still have problems with a landowner who is illegally digging dirt and moving dirt around and putting it in areas where that dirt should not be approved to go there.
Okay, but again, I just said that Soil Conservation DEP went out and whatever he's doing on his property, there is no violations. Now, your interpretation as to whether you think it's right or wrong is, is one thing, but DEP and Soil Conservation is saying there's no violations. So I will be glad to have Mr. Gardner call you again and come out and look at your site.
Because I would like to, I would like DEP and Mr. Gardner to come to my home and look at that site.
I will ask Mr. Gardner to contact you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, yes?
I'd like to know how you came to the decision that three minutes is the limit for speaking and only residents of our county, and why that wasn't opened up to the public for discussion?
Well, it's not up for discussion, that's one thing we get the right to do, is set the meeting rules, and under the meeting rules, we get the right to establish that, so that's what we did. Any other questions?
Yeah, um, again, in the transcript and the legal notices, it said the Holstead Borough will meet at six o'clock for the purp-, uh, to date October eighteenth, for the purpose of working on the two thousand and thirteen budget. I still fail to understand why the commissioners of the whole county can't have a public workshop as well.
It's a decision of the commissioners to do the budget process the way we are, we're still working through the budgets right now. And they're not ready to be presented yet. There's still a lot of legwork to go down.
That's the purpose of a budget workshop, to have the public participate. To have the public understand where the tax dollars are going. And if, if the townships can do it, and the boroughs can do it, I mean, why can't the commissioners do it? You have other meetings for all kinds of other things, you have proclamations for this day and that day. I don't understand why. And, may I ask again, well, yeah, why? Why not?
Because the process that has been established that they're using is what commissioners really wanna go with.
But you could change it.
Commissioners at this time don't wanna change it.
All, all three of you in agreement that the public should be excluded until it's plopped on a desk in the main office?
Yes, if you're asking yes. That's what the county code calls for.
I hardly disagree.
Any other comment? Yes, move back.
Yes, um, what are the, the impact fee money, what are the categories that the impact fee money can be spent on?
Well, there's like about fourteen, fifteen, there's a whole list of them that could be spent on.
Does it include jails?
It does include something with public safety, as far as jails specifically, I'd have to go back through and read it again.
I, I was just, um, the reason I mentioned jails is because, um, there's no literacy program at the jailhouse, and it would be nice to bring that back.
I thought, I thought the library was working on doing something there, or Tree Hav was working on doing something there.
There's some volunteers that come in to help with GED, but there is no actual weekly literacy class like there used to be.
Any other comment, yes?
I'd like to mention that I had to put up with chemical smells this past week near a fracking site, three thousand feet from my house in Silver Lake Township, and they're fracking with sand and hydrochloric acid that's being poured down the drill hole. So I had a smell that, and the neighbors had a smell, and the noise, for about a week, and it's very strong, the smell. And I feel we're being assaulted by chemicals. Is there anything you can do to advocate for us to the DEP? I've written to the DEP, I've called them, and the EPA, and our legislators, and nobody is doing anything about all of the chemicals and the noise that we are being subjected to at these sites. So I have three thousand feet from me, a frac site right now. So what can you do about it?
Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Now move to our salary board. Nine thirty-one. Means call to order. All members present.
Motion to approve meetings in September twenty-sixth, twenty-fourth.
Motion by Treasury Rennick to approve the minutes, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Jean Greco, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item four.
I'll make a motion to increase the salary of the part-time county solicitor to thirty-five thousand dollars a year with no benefits, effective ten twenty-five, twenty-twelve, due to the increased responsibilities. That would be a ten thousand dollar increase.
I'll second that.
What are the increased responsibilities?
What are the increased responsibilities?
Yeah, because I didn't, um, you know, this is a surprise to me, and, um, uh, this didn't happen just overnight, so I, I would've thought that somebody could've mentioned so that I could do a little research and homework, which is what I like to do,
before I come to these meetings, so. Okay, based on what I know and what I've seen with Tom Mar, um, he's been working on planning commission, things that have been going out of there that should not have been going out with right to know. He's trying to get all department heads, um, in line with what goes out, if it's a contract, and what actually is supposed to go out. We're, um, getting increasing contracts or right-to-know, um, requests in from the public wanting to know many more things. He's been working with the Brooklyn DM, physically visiting the Brooklyn DM, the people, um, that were involved there to try to remedy that, working with soil conservation.
Are these all things that are within his job?
Well, these are things that never, never happened, never got done in the past. This is my ninth year. Tom Mar is working harder than any other, um, solicitor that I've seen here. I'm looking at Michael. Sorry, Michael. There's just many more things on the table now, and everything has to be right.
As, the only thing I can tell you from my experience, and I wasn't here in the previous years, uh, I know that, uh, that he is here on a daily basis now, a lot of hours every day versus, uh, in the past where my understanding was a solicitor may pop in for a short period in a day or every two or three days. Uh, based on the hours he's putting in, uh, believe me, he still isn't getting paid very much money per hour.
No benefits.
With no money.
And there's just no benefits.
I do have to add to that because as the, um, Tax Claim Bureau Solicitor, he has been doing a very good job for us, and we're actually going to court more now than we've ever gone before, so.
And I mean, you've had your sales out here, I think they've all gone smoothly for you that you...
Well, I wouldn't go that far.
So, so, and if, um...
I'm not in jail, though, so I guess I'm all right.
And this is without benefits too, which is a huge saving to the, to the county too. Any other questions or comments?
Is that on motion number four?
That's on motion number four.
Yeah, I'd like to add a comment. You got the solicitor you wanted, uh, you didn't interview anyone else, the salary was set, and now we're less than a year into, less than a year into the term, and I don't think anybody should get, be getting a raise. He's doing the job he was hired to do.
Well, he's doing a job three times of what he was hired to do. Based on previous solicitors, based on the rate that was set because of the previous solicitors, he's doing three times the job.
Times are tough.
Well, I understand that, but people should at least make minimum wage for the hours they're working.
I don't think he'd be out of work if he wasn't the part-time solicitor.
I'm sure he wouldn't be. But thank you for your comment. Yes?
And what is his name?
Tom Mar, you know that.
Can you give the name to the public? I'm asking the name, so you don't have to answer that way.
Tom Mar.
What is it, Tom Mar?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. I abstain.
I'm gonna abstain also, because I just feel that I should, I would have liked to have looked at this a little bit longer.
That's fine. Two yes and two abstentions. I'll take clarification on that one.
Yes, I did get clarification before this meeting.
Yes.
If an abstention is a no vote, it's the majority of people voting.
An abstention is not a no vote.
An abstention is not a vote, is what she intended.
Right, right. All right.
See, I did my homework on that.
Item five.
Item five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five as listed on your agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Treasury Benedict to approve item five, eliminate position of Cooperative Extension Secretary Computer Contract, December thirty-first, twenty-twelve. Questions or comments? All in favor?
I'm gonna abstain on five and six for the same reason I did...
I'm sorry, I did not see your hand.
Uh, just asking, did motion four pass?
My understanding is yes, motion four passed, right?
There's no four.
No, it didn't.
No, it didn't pass, I'm sorry.
It did not pass.
Who was it? Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Under five, who was that?
That was, uh, an employee's position, don't worry.
You aren't saying a name?
I'm not saying a name. All in favor of item five?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I'm abstaining. Item six.
I do not abstain.
I'll make a motion for six.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six. I would still want to know why Michael abstained on five.
I have a motion for item six, do I have a second for item six?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Treasury Benedict to approve item six, to eliminate the county position of the Cooperative Extension Office Secretary, Director twelve thirty-one, twenty-twelve. Questions or comments?
Does this have anything to do with the Penn State extension?
Yes, this is Penn State extension.
Could I ask Commissioner Jean Greco why he abstained?
Yeah, for the same reason I abstained in the commissioners' meeting, I can't, I can't abstain and add and vote on this, or it'd be a ratification of what I had an issue with before.
I don't think that's entirely true, because months ago, letters were sent regarding this. Is that correct, that the, that the positions would end on December thirty-first, twenty-twelve? And this was...
Yes, and that's when I began having trouble with that letter, the elimination letter is what started this whole debacle that none of us liked, and I don't know whether it was anybody's fault here that it turned into a debacle. And I'm not gonna agree to anything this guy has presented to us without me reading it, 'cause it was not supposed to have happened the way it did. And I am not gonna ratify the way, and it's nothing against you two, it wasn't, it's got nothing to do with you guys, with you two. You did a good job bringing this thing around. I just haven't read what this Hanson fellow has sent us.
That's fine. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain, so it's clear.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Jean Greco, to eliminate the clerk typist position in children and youth, uh, and change it to a clerk typist position. And youth, two clerk typist positions will remain and create a second fiscal assistant officer position at the current fiscal officer range nine, rate of nine twenty-five per hour, thirty-seven and a half hours per week. Why is this forty hours a week?
Because then we work thirty-seven and a half in the whole.
Okay, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, okay, any public comment in regards to salary board?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Nine forty-one.
Thank you. Kathy, please make your move.
Thank you.